Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee, the whole meeting for April, April 1st, April Fool's Day 2010. As usual at our meetings, we're not going to do any fooling around. Our business is all very serious up here. With that being said, I would like to call upon our village clerk to take the roll call. Please.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Perez.
Sir.
Public Works Director. Police Chief Mulhern.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice.
First item this evening are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held March 11th and board meeting held March 15th, 2010. Any corrections to be reported?
Yes, there are some corrections and they have been made.
And they have been made. Anything else? Thank you. Moving right along, open forum, we have one request before us this evening for under open forum from a Bob Mueller at 44 West 59th Street apartment D, Westmont.
Good evening. As most of you are aware, if not all of you know, we did a red light camera forum last Thursday at the library. Didn't have a great turnout, but we recorded and we actually did have a great panel. And when you bring these minds together, you always learn something new. Plus you do a little bit of your own research. And what we found was pretty shocking. If we could show. Basically, from Chief Mulhern's presentation at the last time, I took the figures and I said, there seems to be $90,000 missing. So what I did was I asked the police department to provide the figures for where the red light camera money was really going. And what you'll see is $62,000 is basically coming to the village, $10,000 in costs, $53,000 basically goes to general revenue. Okay, $16,000 is uncollected. The shocking figure is that $80,000 is going to Redspeed. Okay. Basically, Redspeed is not a U.S. corporation. It has headquarters in Lombard, but officially is owned by United Kingdom Company, somehow has mysterious ties to Israel and Kurdistan. And as it says in the records, it's very difficult to figure out who really owns this company. Now, what this means is basically, we've got to say that right now about $152,000 left our private economy here in Westmont. Okay? $62,000 went to the police department of the public sector. That is, can be considered an even transfer, although usually when money is spent in the private sector, it generates more revenue, so, you know, but we'll say that's an even transfer of money. The problem is the $80,000 that could have been spent here in Westmont or in DuPage County. Let's assume that the expenses for red light or for Redspeed are even $20,000. What that means is Westmont's sent $60,000 to a foreign corporation. It didn't even leave, you know, it's not even in the U.S. economy. We just sent our money over to the United Kingdom. I think that's a problem. Okay. You know, and I mean, obviously, there are other questions about the Redspeed cameras. Lee asked a couple at the last meeting. His question was really quite, you know, quite meaningful. He said, well, we know that now at the Redspeed camera, that the citations are going down. But he asked, well, does that extend to other intersections? Well, Lee, I can tell you personally, this morning, right here at the tracks, that no, it does not carry forward. I mean, one guy was basically going north on Cass and turned on Burlington. I was crossing over the street and just going down the bank. I had to let the car go by. So no, it does not carry forward. It does not make people better drivers. You know, the problem we're facing is we do have budget crises in every level of government. And unfortunately, people want services, but they want the other guy to pay for it. And that's what we're really seeing with red light cameras. We see it with our landlord ordinance. I mean, in the LGBT community, we see it with our taxes. Everybody wants something, but they want it for free. Unfortunately, we don't have a country where we can be honest and say, hey, if you want services, you have to pay for it. We all have to pay for it equally. But I hope we look at these figures for Redspeed. Consider, this is only Westmont with one camera. Think of what all the other communities are sending overseas. Now, we can also go to the extreme that Naperville's going to, hopefully not, but Naperville's installing cameras in their downtown, not even for traffic. I mean, you know, some of us just call this plain Orwellian and let's hope we don't, you know, send this to our kids. So please review these figures and, you know, really consider what we're doing with our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from board members? Thank you. Moving right along, reports. First, I would just like to announce that I'm sure most everyone is very familiar that we had a very tragic accident occur in the Village of Westmont. Our police and fire received a 911 call about 9:40 on Monday night and our police and fire responded and did an excellent job on it. Some very miraculous services that were performed by police and fire. And I will ask our police chief, Tom Mulhern, to come up and get into it, give everyone all of the latest details. But I would just like to compliment our police and fire departments for an excellent job. I was out of town part of the time and about 10 o'clock, Channel 9 comes on news, and there was Officer Muska being interviewed on the TV. It was just a wonderful, wonderful clip and I think real positive for the Village of Westmont, and I commend you on your efforts. Both police, fire, all of our people that responded to that incident. And of particular note, our Officer Muska and firefighters Brandon Sullivan and Mike Dudley. With that being said, you've got a chronological order of the rest of the way that things have transpired in this tragic situation.
Yes, Mayor, I do. And I'd also like to thank you for your comments and your praise for the members of the Westmont Fire Department and Police Department. The word that comes to my mind by performance of my officer, Officer Muska, is phenomenal. She did a phenomenal job. She acted alone, she acted independently. What I'd like to read is a statement which I read at the press conference which we had on Tuesday afternoon where Officer Muska and firefighter Sullivan were interviewed. Prefacing that, I was on the scene at the time of the accident and I was dressed with a winter coat on and gloves and I was cold. And to imagine how Officer Muska was with just wearing a sweater, because she had her bullet resistant vest and her gun belt, jump into the water. The water temperature at that time, which I'll mention, is 40 degrees. The ice, my windshield was iced up when I was done, so the air temperature was definitely below 32 degrees. And yet she jumps into this water, rescues one person and attempts to go back to rescue another, comes out and then, in that cold weather, dripping cold, dripping wet and does this, it just boggles my mind. And so she did a phenomenal job. And also, Mayor, as you mentioned, this was nationwide and worldwide news. Channel 9 was broadcast nationwide. I've also recently received an article from a website called Police Link, which is a national police website, and her Tribune article was posted there as well, and with over 200 comments in the blogs. And I normally don't put stock in blog comments, but if you go to this Police Link, policelink.com and look at the comments in there, it's all from other police officers saying that she is a hero, and she is. So if I could read this comment to you, this was, again, was read on Tuesday afternoon before Officer Muska was interviewed. "On Monday, March 29th, at 9:40 PM, the Westmont Police and Fire Departments responded to a call of a vehicle in the retention pond at 63rd Street and Richmond Avenue. Patrol Officer Jennifer Muska, a police officer with the village for less than two years, however she does have experience with a previous police department for three years, was the first to arrive. She observed a man struggling in the water approximately 15 feet from shore. Officer Muska, without regard for her own safety, immediately entered the water and assisted Mr. Leroy Herbert, Hurlbert Jr. to shore. Officer Muska was assisted by a passerby who had called 911 in assisting Mr. Hurlbert onto the shore. Officer Muska rendered first aid to Mr. Hurlbert before re-entering the water to rescue Mrs. Pearl Herbert, who was unconscious and floating in the water approximately 60 feet from shore. Through the refrigerated water temperature, which was approximately 40 degrees, Officer Muska was unable to reach Mrs. Hurlbert and had to return to shore. At this time, members of the Westmont Fire Department arrived and firefighters Brendan Sullivan and Mike Dudley, equipped in their fire department issued water rescue gear, entered the water and brought Mrs. Herbert, who was unconscious, to shore. Mrs. Herbert, along with Officer Muska, were retreated by Westmont paramedics and transported to Advocate Good Samaritan Hospital in Donners Grove. Officer Muska was later released from the hospital and returned to duty to finish the remainder of her shift. If I could add, she came back to the scene at 1:00 in the morning and I looked at her and was shocked and said, what are you doing here? And she said, I'm fine, I'm okay. I says, it's up to you. You can either go home and take it off for the rest of the shift, or it's up to you, do you want to go back to the patrol and go back to duty? She says, I got my gear, I got a clean uniform, I'm good to go. And she went back and finished her 12-hour shift. But also it was reported that Officer Muska then had to report to Wheaton Court for a court case at 9:00 in the morning. When she did her press interview, which you've all seen on TV, she was up for 26 hours, at her choice. Officer Muska acted instinctively without concern for her own safety to help Mr. and Mrs. Hurlbert. She is to be commended for her quick and courageous actions. It is the witness's opinion, without the quick thinking and actions of Officer Muska and the efforts of firefighters Sullivan and Dudley, the witness did not believe that Mr. and Mrs. Hurlbert would have made it to shore. On behalf of Mayor Ron and the entire village board, I am proud of Officer Muska and the firefighters Brendan Sullivan and Michael Dudley. They are to be commended for their courageous actions on Monday night. I would also like to thank the officers and firefighters who responded to the scene along with members of the Westmont Emergency Management Agency, who is seated to my left, who was there helping in traffic control. MABUS Division 10 Dive Team and the Felony Investigation Assistance Team Fiat Accident Reconstruction Unit. Unfortunately, our condolences go out to the Hurlbert family on the passing of Mrs. Pearl Herbert, a Westmont resident, who passed away from her injuries received from the accident at Advocate Good Samaritan Hospital yesterday afternoon. Our condolences do go out to the family. Open for any questions that you may have.
Well, I always say, we have the best fire and police service in all of DuPage County. And once again, they're second to none. And this board works as hard as they can to do all we can to support our police and fire with staff and equipment. And it's interesting to see that part of our dive team, which we maintain, were involved in rescue. Luckily, we had them around to partake and participate in this rescue effort. So it's, we're very, very fortunate and we're doing all we can to maintain that.
Mayor, you're correct. And then with the fire department, it's because of their water rescue gear that they were, their firefighters, and listening to the interviews Tuesday afternoon, were able to gear up and immediately enter the water upon their arrival without having that gear, and I don't know if other fire departments have that. Firefighter Sullivan mentioned in the interview that they have trained in that pond. He's not a dive specialist. He's not a person that has dive rescue training, but they all train for this. Steve Trout and his staff make sure that all the firefighters are trained in this. Their actions were, again, were courageous and heroic, as was Officer Muska. I can't praise her enough. I mean, I am amazed at her professionalism, her determination, and her heroic actions. It was just, it just speaks volumes of not only her with all the members of our both fire and police departments. I thank you for those comments.
Thank you. You had something else you wanted to cover?
Yes, Mayor, I did. Earlier this afternoon, our police department is participating in a statewide program, which we considered, we also did last year. And this program is where the students of the Westmont High School, basically our snowball and snowflake programs, are going out to all 51 licensed liquor establishments in the Village of Westmont. And this is a program which we participated in last year. The students are posting a flyer, a poster that looks like this at all the businesses. They are also posting a placard or a sign on the windows for all the businesses. It's called Project Sticker Shock. And what the students are doing is they're going to all the businesses in town and they're putting labels on cans of beer and also on wine and liquor products, which will bring attention to the fact that it is illegal to provide alcohol to a minor. It's also legal for the minor to drink that. It's the goal of the program, to educate the people, especially now with the holidays coming up, with the spring breaks and with all the students out on break, and also with the upcoming summer, is to remind them that consumption of alcohol, possession of alcohol, and the sale of alcohol to minors is illegal. And especially what we are very concerned is, what happens usually around the summertime is underage drinking parties. And we have a zero tolerance on that and we take that problem very seriously. So this is a statewide campaign sponsored by the Illinois Liquor Control Commission to get the word out and hopefully prevent the sale of alcohol to minors.
Okay.
And that was all I had, sir.
Very good. Any comments?
Thank you.
You don't have to look far in our newspapers and listen to it on the news to hear about the serious, serious budget constraints all of the villages across the state of Illinois are facing. And now, we're facing another potential for a 30% cut in the revenue that we receive from the state of Illinois. So all of the villages are putting budgets, cutback plans, into place to try to cope with this revenue that will not probably be forthcoming from the state. And just to bring everyone up to date, our staff has been doing a tremendous job, having meetings in every department of making cutbacks, left and right, like cutbacks we never even thought we would have to consider before. But at the same time, in the back of our minds, maintaining the thought that we want to keep all the services that we can for the residents of the Village of Westmont. So it indeed is a very, very difficult process that all of us, and particularly our different staff, staff heads and Ron and everyone else, finance people are working on, but it's truly very difficult and a difficult situation that I think many of us find very, very difficult to handle at this time. But they're doing their best and we're moving forward. They're not, we're not finished by any chance of the imagination with our budget talks and budget cutbacks yet. But my thanks to everyone so far in the village and our staff that we're working so hard and yet trying to maintain all of the services that we can for our residents. That's all that I have at this time. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just want to remind all our residents that Village Hall will be closed tomorrow, Good Friday, so don't come down to pay your bills. If you have to pay a bill, just put it in our box and we'll get it picked up. So, and I wanted to announce that Steve Penzack in my office got his certified municipal clerk from the International Clerks Association today, so I'm pleased with that. And he also passed his Open Meetings Act and got his certificate for that. So he's been a very busy guy. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday weekend. And now I'd like to introduce Larry McIntyre to talk about the census.
Thank you. The mayor was right, today's April 1st, April Fool's Day, but the census is no joke. It's the National Census Kickoff Day. And if you have not filled out your form here in the community and been counted, we're urging everybody immediately to fill out those forms and send them back. As we've been promoting for over a year now, every form that's filled out and turned in represents tax revenue into our community. And Village of Westmont's doing pretty good. If you take a look on our website, we're up to about 60% of our community being counted. So that's pretty good since today's actually the official census day, but there's a lot of work to be done. And so we want to make sure that if that form is like sitting around on your counter and you've been thinking, I'm going to get to it, that you take a look at it right away, fill it out completely. It's only 10 questions, it's 10 minutes. If you fill it out and send it in, then you're going to bring tax money into the community. And I wanted to make sure that people get counted, but then also kind of highlight just a few of the efforts of our census committee, which has worked very hard. And I want to thank all of them. We've been working on this for about a year now. And I'm sure many of you have seen the yard signs throughout the community, and that's somewhat unique. I have not seen many other communities do that. And if you're driving through Westmont, you see these blue signs all over that says, Get Counted. And we were doing, we're able to do that for a very inexpensive rate. Want to thank trustee Klebenow, and her husband, who posted about 30 of those signs through the middle of the downtown area. And Karen Mackert and I covered the entire south side, and we still have some work to do on the north side, but almost 100 signs throughout the community. So we're hopeful that that, you know, reaches people's eyes and reminds them to fill out their census form. We also had a very nice open house event this past Monday, and it was well attended and I felt it turned out pretty good. Want to thank all the volunteers who helped to put that together. Did take a lot of effort, but it was well worth it. We had Channel 2 News out there and they did some video coverage and we're hoping that that'll be on the news either today and there's a possibility that that will air up through Sunday, as that's sort of the timeframe that they're looking at to possibly use that footage. But because of that effort, the regional census people that were at that event, who told us that that was the best event that they had attended all year, invited us to go downtown today, which was the national kickoff in downtown Chicago. And about seven of us went downtown, including trustee Seneca and Karen Mackert, and want to thank them for going down. But we ended up getting interviewed by Channel 2 again, and trustee Seneca represented the village very well. And so thank you for that. And who knows, that might be on the news tonight. We're very hopeful. Our work is not done. I have a feeling that we probably need to do our, reassert our efforts towards the multi-units. And so probably here within the next week or so, I want to organize our committee to get back together, restrategize about how do we get to our multi-unit properties, get more posters up there, get more yard signs. And hopefully here within the next 10 days, we'll have everything well accomplished and a good complete count for the Village of Westmont. The one thing that I also want to just stress one more time, if you do not fill out your census form, what will happen is census takers will come knocking on your door. And so for a lot of people, privacy is a very important aspect of just their lives. And if you don't want census takers knocking on your door and asking questions, fill out that form, send it in, and you get to bypass all of that as well as bring tax revenue in. Thank you.
Larry, just a quick comment about Monday night. So many wonderful events happened to really highlight census. The candy in a jar, you know, relating to numbers, how many pieces are in each jar, that was a contest. They also had the contest for the Westmont Census Blues song. And the winners were there and performed, and Mud Morganfield was quite impressed. He kept looking up there as they were singing. So I just wanted to take one moment very quickly for trustee Emery and trustee Forsley and myself to just quickly sing that a cappella, if you don't mind.
Really?
April Fool. I'm not doing that.
She got me. I thought she was going to stand up and sing.
Couldn't resist, sorry. But it was a wonderful event. And thank you.
Looks like you're going to have to sing yourself, trustee Seneca.
I don't think so. That was April Fool's.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. Is that all? Moving right along, our attorney this evening, Anne Marie Perez.
I don't have any reports tonight, but I want to wish everyone a happy Easter, Passover. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, I wanted to ask for an executive session on personnel following the end of the regular meeting. Passed out a supplemental purchase order list with one purchase order on it in the amount of $6,985 for emergency fence repair at the Water Division. Asked that we add that to the agenda for Monday night. Distributed notices for the anticipated budget workshops, workshops that we've scheduled. Just for the public's information, the first one will be April 12th. The second one will be April 21st. And then we have tentatively scheduled a possible third workshop on April 22nd. These meetings will be here at the Village Hall at 7:00 PM. And then we also have, for Monday night, we have an Administration Finance Committee meeting where we'll kind of kick off some of the budget discussion there, and that'll be at 6:00 here. Related to the mayor's comments earlier regarding the governor's proposed cut of 30% in our income tax, passed out a resolution that actually was put together by the Illinois Municipal League and all distributed across the state and asked all the member municipalities to consider approving this resolution and sending it to the governor. They will, the General Assembly will be taking up the governor's proposed budget after they come back from the Easter break. We're not sure how quickly they're going to act on that. But in our case, and it's stated in the resolution, 30% cut in the income tax would represent a little over $600,000 that we frankly did not plan on losing from our revenue stream for next year. But as the mayor said, we are looking at ways and steps that we, if we have to, that we could implement to adjust to that. But at this point, it's not a certainty that it's going to happen, but it is the governor's And I guess that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Trustees, starting with trustee Seneca.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that there will be an Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, April 7th, here at Village Hall at 9:00 in the morning. This is the last opportunity to go to the Knights of Columbus Fish Fry tomorrow night. It's the closing Friday for Lent, so good meal, good chance to get out. And then again, I just wanted to congratulate our census committee on the Monday night event. It was really well done and it is so important to fill out those forms. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
The only thing I have is we will have a Public Works Committee meeting on the 13th of April at the Water Department at 7:00 PM. Public is welcome to come out and if you want, I'm sure that probably get a tour by either our Public Works Manager Steve May or Mike Ramsey, who takes care of the Water Department. So I'd like to see the public come to some of the meetings. That way they can kind of find out what it is that's going on in that area. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
Just to reiterate, the Administration Finance Committee meeting Monday at 6:00. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Klebenow.
Just one thing that the Public Works or mostly the Water Department had an open house that one Saturday. And sorry, it looked like because of the bad weather and things, it was very poorly attended. They will be carrying this over for the Taste. So some of the games and their ideas and plans, they are going to incorporate during the Taste, and they had some really good plans. So even though if the people didn't make it for the open house, I do hope they look for their setup down at the Taste. They'll have a rain barrel to show how that works and some games and all sorts of nice activities planned. So hopefully the Taste, they'll get some people there to see and have some fun. Other than that, I just wish everybody a blessed Easter. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Emery.
I just wanted to pass on that, as most of you know, I work with about 40 police departments. And normally I'm hearing about, they know I'm a trustee, so I'm hearing about, oh, Westmont gets, you know, the best equipment and Westmont gets the best training and we only wish we could have that and that type of thing. And I'm like, I'm sure you do, but it's a priority for us. And after the incident at 63rd and Richmond, I got a few calls from some of the chiefs. And one in particular said to me, he said, you know, he said, I followed that story, we're all watching it. He said, you must be so proud of your department. And I said, well, not only am I, but... And I said, "Well, not only am I, but we all are." So I wanted to pass it on. Please tell the officer that, you know, certainly, I know it was on the news, but that type of thing does not go unnoticed from her comrades.
Uh-oh, here comes the chief.
Thank you. Hopefully, we have an awards process. You will be seeing Officer Muska and probably the firefighters here in this village board in you sometime in the very near future. So I will express my comments, but you should have the opportunity to do so in person. So, thank you.
We have equal opportunity departments. Our fire chief, Frank Trout, did you care to add anything to this? You were a little late coming, coming in this evening. Thank you, sir. And finally, trustee Scott.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along, new business. 2010, red, white, and barbecue at Ty Warner Park. Board to consider approval of a request from the Westmont Lions Club, the J.C.'s, to waive the required $100 per day fee for the temporary liquor license needed for the 2010 red, white, and barbecue to be held at Ty Warner Park on Friday, 4:00 to 10:00 PM on May 28th, Saturday, May 29th, 11:00 AM to 10:30 PM, and Sunday, May 30th, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, village trustees, as everybody knows, we've come before the board every year asking the same thing for the liquor waiver, and this year is absolutely no exception. We are expecting bigger crowds this year. As you guys know, a lot of the free festivals around us have all disappeared this year. So we are really expecting larger crowds, as I'm sure these people behind me are. So we are requesting our liquor waiver for, again, 2010 barbecue.
Just out of curiosity, Chris, how many participants have registered to take part in the actual contest so far?
Well, in fact, I just got a phone call not 20 minutes ago on that. We currently have 37 professional barbecuers registered, with up to another 25 that have committed themselves. Unfortunately, we have to cap off at 60 because of space requirements. So this may be the first year we have to turn people away. So it is looking just absolutely phenomenal. I think we have eight or 10 registered amateurs. Our entertainment lineup is virtually complete right now. Everything is just coming together faster and better than it ever has.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members?
Just remember, we're only 58 days away from barbecue.
Thank you. Next item, St. Jude Children's Research Hospital DVD. Board to consider approval of airing on Channel 16 a St. Jude Children's Research Hospital informational DVD promoting the race to the flag, 5K race on May 30th, 2010, to benefit St. Jude. Comments?
This is similar to a request that they made last year.
Okay. Very good. Next item, 2010 Taste of Westmont. Getting closer and closer every day. Board to consider approval of the following requests from the Westmont Special Events Corporation for the 2010 Taste of Westmont to be held July 8th, 9th, and 10th. Always the weekend after the 4th of July.
That is correct, yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Well, it's fast approaching, the taste, and I'm here to come up with my, annually, as I normally do, to talk in regards to our permit waivers and fee waivers and stuff, too. And this year, too, is unique, as we're battling some financial issues, as most everyone knows. And we're asking for some special considerations, proposals tonight, that we are considering some additional changes that I'd like to go through with you this evening as well. This year, our theme is fun in the sun. And, well, actually, my wife and Robin here have some gifts for everyone here. Good. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. As long as we don't have to sing, it's all right.
No singing, no singing. It's really not really an April Fool's thing either, so.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fun. Oh, purple's good. Whatever, whatever you have.
But this year, we're, you know, we, our theme, like I said, is fun in the sun. And we got a great lineup as far as entertainment goes. On Friday, we've got the Monkees, the Beach Boys, kind of a Beatles tribute band. On Saturday, we've got a Jimmy Buffett tribute band. Eyes of March are coming back again this year. And then, Sunday, we have our Blues Jam, we have Little Eddy and the Imperials. So we got a really good lineup. And plus, a guitar slideshow, or that were, a contest that we'll be performing as well. So it's bound to be very good as far as entertainment goes this year. I would like to kind of talk through some of the changes, and I have some of the layouts here. And this should be the same that's in your packet that we submitted. I don't know if everyone can see this or not, but I thought we kind of talked through some of these things here a little bit. One of the things that we like to do, too, this year is, is in the, last year, we closed Cass Avenue around noon on Thursday, before the taste, to get things set up a little earlier, also to help the street divisions with cost and stuff. This year, we like to close it even sooner than that. We like to actually close it, well, first thing in the morning, I think it's 4:00 AM is when the street division gets in, but close it at that time, so that we could basically get carnival in early, as well as possibly even, we want to actually have the carnival start that evening around 4:00. Probably see the, sorry, moved it there. So we'd like to kind of do it earlier. This year, it'd be unique as far as having that at 4:00, start the carnival on Thursday. We'd also like to change a little bit of the carnival layout this year. What we are proposing is that we would still use Cass Avenue from Burlington to Irving, not use the parking lot on Burlington and Cass, leave that for the businesses. Basically, turning the corner on Irving, going west, and then actually moving some of the carnival rides into the Methodist parking lot, right there. Part of the reason for doing the Methodist parking lot is because there are a few additional rides that we like to bring this year to help, help our financial situation, because there are bigger rides that draw bigger crowds. But they're also, you know, to answer our surveys and trying to bring a little more uniqueness to the carnival that we've never had before as well. And these rides require a bigger footprint, and the Methodist parking lot actually meets that need. We couldn't put those rides at the Burlington and Cass lot because of the strip, the islands that are there, the curbs and stuff. And also, we'd like to use some of the tune lot to put some of the carnival rides as well in there. In addition to the Thursday opening that we like to do, we also like to, on where our U-Stage tent is on Irving, actually sell, WSC would actually do a little hot dog and hamburger stand, and pop, and possibly ice cream as well.
And you'd set that up where?
Right by the Irving Street stage. So it'd be just on the, yeah, just on the north end there on Irving. So I think that's all the major areas with the carnival layout. Does anyone have any questions on this?
You've been approved by the church?
Yeah, the church is okay using us. They're gonna, they've already talked to their commuter, the commuters that park there, so they will be, and the chief has allowed the commuters to be able to park in the street during that time, as well as the other church lot the commuters can use as well. They've already negotiated that as well. We even talked to some of the residents around there about the carnival being there to make sure that they're, they're okay with it as well. Also to mention, too, we also like to close the alley in that corner, too. And possibly consider even fencing in that whole lot. So that way, there's really one main entrance for people to come and go. So they're not going down the alley. They're basically coming onto Irving, into the Methodist lot, and then back out to the Irving lot, or the Irving Street.
Did any of the residents you talked to have a problem with it, moving the carnival in?
No, no. Actually, Joanne, it was, went with our chair, Linda Savaka, who couldn't make it today. But no, they, they all had, did good results. And I think even...
I don't have a problem with it, I'll be honest. I am a little concerned about my mother-in-law.
Okay.
And we didn't talk to her, but she lives very close to that, and she is 91 years old.
She can come stay with me that night.
What?
She can come to my house that night.
Sue's always having parties.
Yeah, love to have her. I like Grandma.
Well, I guess, I guess I'll wade into this a little bit. By blocking that alley off, I think you're going to restrict, some of those restaurants have to use that alley to move their food up and down the backside. The other concern I have, even if you fence it in, I think you're now including the alley as a walkway and pathway behind these businesses for the carnival.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to avoid by fencing it in and closing up the alley.
Well, we know how fences work and that kind of case, but I'm not sure if that's really going to make a difference of them wandering up and down that alley. The other thing is that you want to leave the public lot open for business parking. How can you guarantee that it's only going to be people parking in that lot for the businesses in this downtown area?
Actually, that, there is another section of my proposal, and regarding the downtown businesses. We actually met with the DWBA in regards to that. And they would like to maybe possibly have a, enforce maybe a two-hour parking limit, or come up with maybe some signage that we could put up there saying, "For business parking only." I know that's not the best deterrent. Or even possibly having someone stationed there that has cars come in and say, you know, what, you know, as far as your intent goes, and that situation as well. You know, guiding people into spots, kind of.
Well, the kind of thing that I caught from the one meeting, the Downtown Business Alliance, was that they thought by moving that carnival out of that lot, you're kind of taking away from some of the actual view of people coming down, and keeping the carnival in the lot's kind of an advertising tool.
Correct, yeah.
Now, the question, the question I have for you is, if you were to use that lot, would you need to use the lot up at Toons?
If we went, if we, if we could not use the Methodist lot, we would go back to last year's configuration. And last year's configuration never used the Toon lot.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, if you use the Methodist lot, okay? And you still had the children's rides down in the regular parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Do you still need the Toon lot for carnival rides?
Probably not, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
The main thing here is, what is this ride that you're looking to put over here in the Methodist lot?
The name of the ride escapes me, but it's one of those, I don't know.
It's large.
It's a large ride. It's one of those ones that, it's, yeah, it's one of those ones that spin, and I don't have any more information on that than, than that. I, so.
I mean, I just, I just think if you, if you try to control that public lot down there on that corner with parking, I think you're just asking for a, I just soon see it filled with carnival rides. And try to regulate that parking down in that lot. I mean, honestly. Because, I mean, you can, you can say you have a two-hour limit, or you have a, you have a four-hour limit, then you're going to have to put somebody down there to go through and mark these cars. And then, you got the situation to try to find them. They may be down in the fest someplace.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you want to designate, say, the first two rows to handicap parking only, you know, I mean, something like that. But to try to keep that lot open, I think you'd be fighting a battle that you're not going to win, honestly. I really do. I mean, and I, and I appreciate the idea, I really do, don't get me wrong. But I just think from a standpoint of trying to enforce that...
Two hours was all you needed.
I'm not sure that it would, that it would work. And I also think that maybe you might want to keep it as just an advertising thing. Because I think that, and I'm not saying for sure, I don't know for sure, but I think the parents may be kind of like having the kids' rides all in one spot.
You know, I don't know. I have mixed feelings about leaving that lot open. I know it's important to, especially the restaurants, to have parking. And they take a hit during the taste. You know, they'll tell you, they take a hit.
Yes, correct.
Maybe I'm naive, probably I am, but I think most people, if there's signage that says, "Business parking only," I think most Good Samaritans are going to go somewhere else and park. You're going to always have somebody who's going to buck the system, and maybe half of the lot will be festgoers. But if you can even preserve part of that lot for the businesses, I do think that's important. I mean, we've been working so hard to help these businesses thrive, and then to shut them down for three days. You know, I'm uncomfortable with that. I'd like to see us make it work some way. And I, your points are well-takenly, but I think a lot of people will observe the signs and not park there. I, I really think that most people are pretty good about that, if it says, "No parking." Of course, they don't stop at red lights at Naperville, so who knows?
They don't stop at crosswalks in the middle of town.
This is true.
Just to run over you. So I mean, you know, I mean, the thing is, the only thing I would ask, if that were the case, and if that lot is left open, I think that gives you an advantage as far as handicap parking. Maybe we could, maybe...
Well, I don't even know for handicap parking, the fest heads north.
I mean, I'm not talking about the whole, I'm not talking about the whole thing. I'm just talking about a portion of it, to give you a few more handicap spots for people to park in. That's all.
Yeah, well, we do that at the Bank of America lot, too, as well. We set up handicap there as well. And then, we usually try to get a golf cart going back and forth to bring people as they see them, you know, back and forth as well for handicap. Because, you know, most, I'm sure, you know, I think most people want to be more, not necessarily with the carnival, but more towards where, you know, the main action is the food and the bingo and stuff.
So what is the take on feedback as far as closing that street down that day, or early that morning, and actually starting the carnival up at 4:00 PM Thursday night?
Some of the feedback I got is that, you know, in general, because we closed at noon last year, this year, we're asking to be closed at 4:00 AM. There's a few businesses that are open in the morning that would affect them. I think most of them start around 11, or good numbers start around 11. I'm not sure what exactly the time the restaurants start or not. But, so it only, it's only going to affect them, I think, in a few hours time span. I don't know, Barb, if you would agree, or John as well.
That's why we want the lot open.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. Please.
Yeah, there's, you know, as with everything, everybody's got their own opinion. So, yeah, there, probably NBC Fitness, and Terry's, it opens early, La Petite would be somewhat affected by the early hours. I have not heard a real harsh negative to this. I think we're all of the feeling that if this will bring in more revenue for the village by having the extra hours for the carnival, then we're willing to make that sacrifice. You know, it's not that horrendous, it's not that long, it's not that much. And as long as there's a general benefit there, we're willing to go along with it. And if I could just put my two cents in about that parking lot, I think one of the best solutions would be if we were to designate at that parking lot that that is valet parking. And we could do valet parking for anyone, once that lot was filled with valet parking. And, and that way, anybody who wanted that service could have it. You could have it for handicap, you could have it for people who just don't want to walk that far. So that's, that's a thought.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other comments on that subject for...
Well, the valet parking kind of threw me off. Normally, you would pull up in front of your business, and the valet would take it there so you can walk into the business. Now, where is the valet going to pick up the car to drive it to that parking lot?
At the entrance.
Right, at the entrance.
At the entrance, right there on Burlington?
Well, I would assume, I'm guessing, that say, Tim has people scheduled for Saturday. When they confirm, they will say, "Pull your car up to the lot, tell them that you have an appointment, and the, you know, we'll take care of the valet." Is that, yeah. It's not really so much for John Q. Public...
It's not somebody driving, it's just having somebody...
For the business, and it's a good way to police it as well.
Yes.
Because you're going to park, you're going to park there, you're going to pay for it.
Yeah. Fantastic.
Yeah, if you're, if you're...
Yes.
Yeah, if you're going to park, if you're going to park there, you're going to pay for it.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, it's another consideration. We don't have to make that decision, but that's something more for you to consider.
Talk about, consider, absolutely. And we're always open, as far as our options go, too. So please keep that in mind. Just kind of quickly moving along here a little bit, talking the distance, or the taste between Irving and Norfolk. For the most part, it's going to be the same. For the most part, it's going to be the same, the only difference is, is that we, I, we're getting, we'd like to get three ATM machines, and I would probably put one of them somewhere in the middle of the, somewhere between Irving and Norfolk as well. But that said, any comments between that area?
Are they local banks?
Well, I have, one is Bank of America, I'm waiting for them to get back to me on, as far as that goes. The other one is a, it's a company called, um, um, Brownberry, I believe, and, his name escapes me, I'm sorry about that, but, um, they actually do the Taste of Lombard and a lot of various events, they're nationwide, and they have mobile ATM machines that they come out and, and put out to your event, so, and they are proposing to do three for us this year.
Do you get any percentage off of them allowing to do that?
Yeah, exactly. We get, um, 50 cents on every transaction that, that occurs on, on that as well.
Nice.
So, I believe there's a 3.50 charge that gets charged whoever uses their card on it, and then we get 50 cents of that $3.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
As far as our food vendor area goes, basically, it's the same as, again, as, as last year, only this year we have 20 food vendors, confirmed 20 food vendors, so we are full up, which is a first for us this year, or at this time of the year, you know, be full up like that. We are also proposing to put an ATM machine by our information tent, and then one at the start of the food vendors, some, someplace between where the, we have their main beer area and the food vendor, for the second, for the, for the other ATM machine.
Excellent.
Possibly moving our bean bags around a little bit, maybe in Manning School parking lot, we haven't, we go back and forth with that and trying to free up, you know, trying to get bean bag with a little bit more exposure in the past. If, I know, if there's a problem with our main, where we have our beer tent as far as the main beer tent goes, with the Monaco, I don't know if Monaco building is, I know it's still for sale, I believe, I don't think it's, if it's been sold or not, but if there's a problem getting that space, as of right now there isn't, but if there is, we would then request to put the main beer tent on Irving, oh, Norfolk, I'm sorry, on where information tent currently is. All right? Any questions? Moving along?
Nothing further? That's all?
Looking good.
Sorry.
Any other questions from board members?
And, the last is the main stage area. Couple of different changes here we like, we're proposing to do. The big thing is having a second beer tent. What we like to do is, is during the main time, during the, during time when we have the concerts going on, it'd be about five or six, we like to basically open up a, a second beer tent, satellite tent there, right there in the Brickyard parking lot, more towards the back of the alley, basically to serve beer and probably Mike's Hard Lemonade out of. Keep it limited, we're only want to do maybe, you know, light beer and regular beer, and just the two flavors that we saw at Mike's as, as well. We're considering doing bottle beer, the plastic bottle beer. Reason is, is that it's difficult right now for us to get a second trailer to get kegs in, you know, that they, they have, so bottle beer, the plastic, it'd be the plastic bottles, you pop the cap off and, and you give them the bottle as well, and it's easier for us to manage as well. The other proposal that we're doing is actually want to move back the main stage area more towards by Bishop's Chili, pretty much in front, basically creating a lot more viewing area, with the anticipation of other events not happening this year, we're thinking that with bigger crowds, we want more viewing space for people to be able to see the concert as well.
Perfect.
All right.
If we're going to be serving plastic bottles and in addition, all the food vendors serve bottled water, can we get some recycling bins out there for the plastic?
We can, and we've experimented that in the past, and, and the problem is, is that once someone throws regular trash in there, it's, you know, um, I have no problem trying again, I, I would love to try, every year I say that just with our cans, and it's, never works out, unfortunately.
It's a shame, because that's a lot of unnecessary landfill stuff coming out of there.
I, I totally agree with you. I, you know, believe me, when it comes to being green, I'm, I'm all there, so.
Now, by moving the tent back, I know there was a discussion, there's no way you're blocking that one medical building?
Yeah, and I did talk to the doctors there, and they're okay with, with doing it, what they would need is a little more heads up from a reminder, because they want to make sure that their patients can, they have to come through the alley, let them know that when they come for their appointment, they're coming through the alley. He also wants me to talk to the food store that's right there, because their trucks, delivery trucks tend to kind of block that part of the alley, maybe seeing about, if, if there's a way that they can, you know, during that time, that if they can not block the alley, or do something in regards to that as well.
In the past, you usually had like one lane going along the side, so people could get in and out of the medical, but you won't have to have that if they all come through the alley?
Correct. Now, they're only open on Friday, they're not open on Saturday, and they're only open until 4:00 on Friday. So, we open up, well, the road will be closed on Thursday, so, and we could probably give them somewhat of a path Thursday to get in, you know, as things are kind of getting set up, probably more Friday when, when things will get, actually when the, some of the trailers come in, and when, when everything gets really, really set up then. So, it just, it would be an inconvenience for them on probably Friday for a few hours, blocking that, that as well. So, like I said, the doctors were pretty much okay with that, when I talked to them a little bit.
So, you have to keep on them to remind them?
Well, exactly, you know, and it was kind of nice to, to get that contact with them too, so, and they were appreciative of the heads up beforehand as well.
It's a tight alley, because they're using it for employee parking down there, too.
Are they? Okay. I didn't know that, so. Okay?
I'm, I'm not in favor of a second beer tent. I just think you're, even though it's a short period of time, I just, I mean, the way people congregate around something like that, I can just foresee that coming out even more, and I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not real in favor of having an extra type of container out on the street. I mean, I just, I think your main beer, your main beer tent is the way it ought to be, and I mean, by all means, I'm not a teetotaler, I have my days, but I just, I, I'm not in favor of a second beer tent, I'm just not in favor of it.
I, that's fine, I understand. You know, our, our goal here is, is a couple of things. I mean, first of all, it's convenience, you know, because it's right there. Once the music gets started, and our main beer area gets totally packed, and you've probably seen it where it's totally packed, it probably deters a lot of people from actually going to buy beer, you know, because they see the big lines, or, and they, and they miss the sun. This is just a way to kind of offset that during, when the musics happen, as well as it'll help us bring some more revenue in, that we're, we're trying to do. We've challenged all of our committees, you know, to try to, you know, gain 10%, you know, from, from our budget, so that we could, you know, make up the 16 and 8,000 that we lost last year, and hopefully not lose any more this year, you know, and right now sponsorship dollars are not flowing in, so we are very concerned this year of, of being able to, you know, put on the taste and not come through with a loss again like we did last year.
Well, I'm going to ask a big favor, then. If the other members are in favor of it, that's fine, but I, I'd really like to know at the end of the taste, how much food the vendors have moved? I mean, it used to be that we would, we would know how much they moved, I mean, for instance, how many years of corn were sold, or, and in Jay Fleming's case, how many Cuban sandwiches he sold, or, you know, La Petite sweets, how many pieces of cheesecake were sold in a given weekend? I, I think, I understand the revenue, I understand the alcohol and the carnival being a revenue generating product, but then again, I think we need to also kind of get back to, part of what this was about was the Taste of Westmont, in showing our restaurants and displaying what we have and their products, and at the end of it, that was one of the biggest things, to know how much of a particular product was sold from each vendor. But I, I, I kind of have this thing in my mind now, it's all about the, it's all about the alcohol, and it's all about the carnival rides, and it's like, if that's where we're going, then I'm not sure the Taste of Westmont ought to be the proper thing to name it anymore.
Well, I mean, you got to understand, those are two biggest revenue generating vehicles that we have.
I understand that, I appreciate that.
But, but we're still looking into, you know, as far as keeping it a family event, I mean, we have, we have 20 food vendors now, and, and, you know, Papado's is being one that we didn't have last year, is in this year. You know, the youth stage, we're looking into, you know, Brookfield Zoo again, doing a lot more with kid stuff this year, you know, than we normally done in the past. You know, I know my wife was even talking to, about Radio Disney, you know, having them come out as well, so we are, you know, those kind of things that, that bring in the hometown feel, the family type of thing, we're, we're still going that fast forward, it's just that, you know, those are the kind of discussions you probably don't hear about, because we don't come and tell you of all the things that we're doing behind the scenes and bringing other areas of entertainment and, you know.
Now, those are things that have always been, I mean, they used to have the petting zoo and the things like that, and JC's had their dunk tank, I think this year you'd probably, if you could get us to go up there to get in the dunk tank, guys, you'd make a fortune. But, you know, all's I'm saying is, just give it a round type thing. I mean, include all the food vendors in, into your final counts. You know, I know that they spend a fair amount of money to be in it, but give that as another advertising thing at the end of, at the end of the fest, you know, such and such restaurant sold so much of this, and, and I mean, those are the things that I think are kind of important, too, and I, and I'd hate to see us get away from that, that's all.
I understand.
Uh, Lee, I understand your concerns about the second beer tent, and the way I'm looking at this, and this is just my opinion on it, but we are hoping, everyone's keeping their fingers crossed, that we will, we will get a lot more people because of so many towns not having things, so it's, you know, it's, it's a crapshoot. But if we have the first beer, beer tent, we're taking the carnival and starting to move it into the residential area till 11 o'clock at night, so you've got people over by those houses. If we get more, more crowds and more bodies and a second beer tent, Chief, is, is there a possibility that we're going to have not enough staff in the police department? Because if that possibility exists, I would like the chief to be able to call Ron or the mayor and say, you know, we've got 15,000 more people than we anticipated, we've got two beer tents, we've got people strolling around the residential area, we want to shut the second tent down. So, I, you know, I understand all of the reasoning, but I would like the caveat that if it starts to get out of control and we don't have enough police bodies, we shut it down.
And that's fine, I, I mean, I'm, if something like that ever got out of hand, regardless of if we only had one beer tent, we shut it down, yeah, we won't let something like that go out of control.
Um, so, that said, Chief, what is typically in the taste, how much manpower, is it a lot of overtime, are we bodied out, what's, what's the deal?
It depends, we have a lot of, this last year, in an effort to work with the WSCC, we reevaluated our manpower and our man strength, and it was reduced drastically because of the crowds. You bring up a valid point, as the crowd increases, we're going to have to have more officers, that is also a concern for the WSCC, because that increases their costs. The way we work with the WSCC is that our officers work, extra duty employment, they get the village charges a corporation or a company $40 per hour to hire an officer off-duty. What we do is, we have, we assign the officers to this detail, because a lot of times the detail will not fill, so we have to order officers to work this, we're required to pay overtime. The agreement we made with WSCC last year is that they will pay the $40 per hour for officers, and the village will pick up the overtime over and above that, or they'll pick up the difference for the officers' overtime. I believe, I can't quote you the figure, but I could get that to you by Monday if you wish. You bring up a valid concern, for the extra beer tent, it'll be a maximum or a minimum of one additional officer, because you have to have an officer at the beer tent, if the crowds do increase, we have to see more, we're, and we're anticipating more crowds, as everyone's telling us, then we're going to have to add more manpower for this, rather than reducing like we did last year, we're going to add more, and that also, again, will include, increase the cost for the WSCC.
Okay.
Well, it's a family atmosphere, but this is about the only town I know that has beer walking all over town with it, though. It's not corralling like Downers Grove and some of the rest of them, so I'm not really sure the family atmosphere is what we're portraying here. And I'm no teetotaler either, but the fact that we still do this and have people walking around town with beer in their hand, unless I'm mistaken.
You are correct, however, and we, the police department has evaluated this on an annual basis, if you look at events, and we're going back to the old events in Westmont where you had to contain the beer, you had to contain everyone drinking the beer, you also contained your problems in one area, and you had all your drinkers in one, and you, we saw an increase in problems. In talking with towns, specifically Downers Grove and other towns that contain their beer, your, their problems increased, you have to have a large contingent of officers there, because where you're putting all your drinkers, or most of your problems may occur in one area. What we found is by spreading them out and letting, and travel throughout the whole fest, Taste of Westmont with their beer, we don't have those problems. It, it just tends to see, we have, we've had reduction in problems rather than increase in problems. Other officers from other towns have come to our event off-duty and have told us they wish their events would do like what we're doing and letting it spread out, so you're not, just Scott corralling all the, the problems in a small confined area, rather than letting the people spread out, move out a little bit more, and also reduces the possibility for additional problems.
And we haven't had the problems that some of the other towns have had. If we'd had the problems, we would have had to stop doing that a long time ago, but for some reason, it's a very, a very good crowd. We have very, very few incidents occurring, so I, in my opinion, it's always been, as long as, as long as we can continue doing it that way without the problems, it's okay. But if we do encounter problems, then we'll have to change it.
I guess I just have a problem with family atmosphere and liquor.
Yeah.
That's me, I understand it's a revenue, and I understand it's always been this way, but we keep wishing family to come here, and, just an opinion on me that.
Oh, yeah, right, and everybody's entitled to their.
And Mayor, I was going to add on, and I've been here long enough for events, way in the past, over 20 years ago, where we confined the alcohol sales to the stage into one area, and I can tell you personally, there was an increase of problems there with those events than compared to what we have at the Taste of Westmont. However, an increased alcohol sales does also increase the potential for possible problems as well, but we can't say that for sure, because we don't know, it's just possible.
Bob, well, the second tent, because I kind of had mixed feelings about this second tent myself, but I'm envisioning it sort of as a satellite that might not even be open the same hours as the big tent.
Correct.
And kind of the place where, you know, you're watching the concert, and you run over and you get a beer, and you go back to your seat.
Correct.
I don't see it as something where people are going to be congregating, where they're going to be hanging out, is that pretty much what your attention is?
That's our take on it, yeah, and, and we're going to order a limited number of beer, of bottle beers, so if it's out, once we run out, we're out, we're done.
And, and it will be open certain hours?
It's only open when the main tent opens up, we're thinking like 7:00 to 10:00. Basically, we're, we're thinking three hours during the main time.
During the main entertainment.
Exactly, maybe a little earlier on Saturday, because, you know, things start a little earlier on Saturday, Friday, you know, 7:00 to 10:00, and having it end by 10:00, too, and, you know, as well, so it doesn't go on till later on.
Sounds like good work.
Mayor, I was asking Village Attorney Perez about the, the request for openly transporting the alcohol within the area, and that, that needs to be added to the agenda, I guess as a separate item, and then added into the ordinance for Monday night. That was part of the write-up, but didn't make it into the agenda.
Other than, you know, again, we, we appreciate the village and, and the relationship that we have with, with the village, we're not seeking any grant money this year from the village, although we are dependent upon your in-kind services. Other than that, that's all I have tonight, unless you have any additional questions you want to talk about.
I, I just want to say thank you, I know you've been working on this for a year, these are all volunteers that barely get a pizza once in a while, without you, we wouldn't have a Taste of Westmont, and it's much appreciated, thank you for everything you all do.
You're welcome, thank you.
And it gets better and better every year.
Well, we try, we're, we're always trying to improve it every year, make it better.
And I think it's, it's obvious that you're trying to do more things to make more revenue, so that there's even a lesser possibility of having to
Well.
...come to the village for any, any money.
You're, you're exactly right.
Congratulated on that.
Yeah, I mean, we want to be self-sufficient, we want to stand on our own, and we've been struggling with that, and it was, it's, it's hard in this economy to even do that these days, and
Absolutely.
And our sponsorship dollars just haven't been what we were hoping for.
Right, right.
So, as of yet.
Any other questions, comments, board members?
I just had one, Mayor, if I could.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Going back, and I know it was, we started to talk about it, and to agree with Trustee Fleming's comments, our concern and our joint concern with public safety and public works is the, the traffic management with the carnival plan. First, I want to say, all of the timing and the geometry and everything is actually much simpler, and it's going to work a lot better and with less better and with less labor, too. So that everything being proposed is a, is a good improvement over the past years. But this, this blockage of the alley, it's important that that remains open. The alley itself, well, it is an alley. It's narrow. It's only 16 feet of property, but there's only about 12 feet of pavement. So it is single file. And that's got to be 600, 700 feet long. So any truck that, you know, found its way down there would try to back all the way out, or you're, you're requiring traffic to turn around on private property or try and figure out how they're going to do that. So we do have to maintain this, this, you know, traffic path through here. And that's the only other concern. There was a comment about the carnival and fencing that in, and usually when I hear fence, that means, you know, Public Works is going to do it. And I just want to point out, we already use 100% of what we own, and every year that, through damage, that supply goes down and down and down. So if we're going to, you know, if you're, that is expected of us, there's a, there's a vast purchase that will be, you know, needed as well for that supply. Maybe the carnival themselves can, you know, rail that with their interlocking gate or something. I don't know. It's something to look into.
Definitely. We can look at that.
A cost involved with that.
We can look at all kinds of options, whatever.
That was all I had.
Okay. And if we do want to leave the alley open, what we can do, too, is then just make sure that we have traffic control there, you know, while the carnival is open or during the event time that it's open, to make sure that if trucks are going through, we're stopping pedestrian traffic, allowing the truck to go through, and then closing up again as well. So...
Right. There's a lot of things we can do with signs and bring high attention to that corner, but it's important that it stays open.
If you have a truck... Now, that would just be traffic coming out of the alley, correct, heading north. You're not going to allow...
North horsos, but no turning.
Yeah. And I believe that the alley does, is more of a T shape, too. Isn't there an interest in...
Up here, but it's the same, it's the same problem. All of the users from here to here have to...
Correct. Now...
So they're going to just cross over the street? They're not going to turn down the street to head to Lincoln?
That would be my recommendation.
We could just make it one way or something and with signage and stuff. I know that when we met with the Downtown Business Alliance, they were the ones that suggested about closing it because, you know, they weren't too concerned about deliveries. But I don't know if that's truly the case with your businesses as well, but...
Just...
I think from...
Make one truck, you know, to get stuck in there.
You know, also from a safety standpoint, and that, and access for either police or fire, either one, access quickly up and down the backside of the properties, you need to leave that open. And I mean, it's very simple. You direct it one way because you have several businesses down there that do get deliveries or need deliveries. And, but you, you have to leave that as a, as an open thoroughfare through there. I mean, you just, somehow or another, you know, somebody's going to have to kind of watch what's coming through that alley and maybe stop pedestrians from, at that point in time, but...
I agree. If it's, if it's going to be open, it'll be manned.
Because, I mean, the biggest thing is you're going to have your garbage trucks down there on Thursday anyway, running their, running their pickups down that alley.
Well, yeah. And they come in the morning as well, you know, the days of the taste. So we have special deliveries for that. So, all right. Thank you. Anything else?
What time does the carnival shut down?
This year, we're proposing to stay open till 11:00. So Thursday till 11:00. It'd be Friday till 11:00, Saturday, and then 9:00 on Sunday.
In that residential area, that's a little rough, but...
Well, and maybe what we can do is we could, we could turn down the volume at a certain time because I know some of those rides all have speaker systems and they play loud music. You know, maybe do something with lighting so it's not so bright as well. Maybe after a certain time, they go, not dark, but, you know, things get a little quieter and a little less...
That would be good.
Especially Thursday night.
And there's a lot of young kids along there, too, that parents will be trying to get to bed if it's...
Yeah.
That would be my only concern.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob. Next item, Cruising Nights 2010. Board to consider approval of the following requests from the Westmont Special Events Corporation for the 2010 Cruising Nights.
Hello again. Well, thank you. Well, this year, I mean, we're, we're, have some other new proposals when it comes to cruising nights this year. We have a, a couple of layout proposals to bring before you tonight. I'll go ahead and kind of get started with, with those as well. The first proposal is, is a proposal that actually was brought to us by the downtown businesses in regards to closing Cass Avenue. I can show you the layout here a little bit, just to get it, so you get an idea of what we're talking about. The giant P areas represent public parking, and the yellow areas represent classic car parking. And of course, the stops represent where we're, we're going to stop traffic. But the idea that's being proposed here is that, is that we would close off Cass Avenue in the same manner that we do the Taste. The street divisions would, would be doing that possibly, along with some help from our group. And then roughly, you know, at, we close at around 5:30 or so, you know. And then basically, so the classic cars can go in and park literally right down Cass Avenue between Irving and, and the Burlington, put them diagonally, you know, right on the street. Also, we'd like to use the area by Irving because we're, we're estimating that we can get about 70 cars between Irving and Burlington. And in the past, we've had up to 100 at the beginning of the, of the last year's cruising nights at, at given times. So we're proposing that cars do, when they do come in here, they go in one way, they get checked in, they get escorted to their parking spot, and then when they're ready to leave, they get escorted out going out the Burlington exit over there.
Are the businesses fine with this plan?
They were the ones that kind of came up to us. I don't know, Barbara, if you want to talk about it or...
Do you want to see the proposal first?
Sure, yeah. Oh, do you want to see the second proposal first, she's asking, or do you want to go through?
That's fine.
Okay. The second proposal is, is basically going back to the old cruising nights layout with a few differences. This, on, the proposal 2A, as I have it here a little bit, is actually that the Cass and Burlington lot would be shared by both public and classic cars. Classic cars would take the bottom one-third and two, and the top two-thirds would be for public parking. Our plan would be to have a, a person stationed as, on the entrance as they come in, because as you know, safety is our concern. So we want to make sure that any cars coming in are somewhat escorted to their spots, as well as any classic cars getting in, too, as well. So there, it will have some kind of escort in pulling them in. We'd also like to then have the side parking on Cass Avenue, basically starting from the crosswalk right there, and I think where the old dog stop used to be, heading north up to Irving. Still closing Irving between Cass and the alley right there, using the Toon Lot, and then continuing classic car parking up to Norfolk from that point on. And then on special occasions, this will be for the squad car night, fire car, or fire truck nights, and maybe even our last night. What we'd like to propose is a, is a second change to the layout where classic cars would, would basically take up the whole lot at, at the Cass and Burlington lot. We would basically then start the, parking on Cass Avenue would start farther up on the west side of town, giving up an additional eight to 10 spots for, for the businesses as well. Still, you know, utilizing the, closing Irving between, you know, Cass and the alley, Toon Lot, and then going up to Norfolk, you know, on Cass, with classic car parking as well. So, or any combination of.
Okay. Barb?
Barb Latso with the Framemakers. I'm here tonight not only as a business on Cass Avenue, but also as head of the DWBA, which is the business organization downtown. The first comment goes back a minute to the taste in patrolling that alley. I certainly share Lee's comments about there could be issues with the alley that's east of Cass, between Cass and Lincoln. We have problems in that alley as it is. And I realize businesses need that for delivery, but there may be some sort of compromise of the, the alley being open during the day and then closed during the evening when you would have more foot traffic from the carnival and so forth. But anyway, to get on to the business at hand. The DWBA would like to express their support for the closing of Cass Avenue during cruising nights. The closing of Cass would help in making the event feel more festive and be more pedestrian-friendly. The businesses would be more likely to participate on the sidewalk, enhancing the event further. Businesses on Cass and throughout the community are suffering right now and could desperately use and greatly appreciate any and all help the village and community could offer. Closing Cass and offering us sidewalk space is a great way for us to promote our businesses to the community in a fun and inviting atmosphere. Closing Cass Avenue and retaining the Cass Burlington parking lot for business patrons is extremely helpful and supportive for the businesses. This ensures that businesses that are open these evenings will be able to offer their customers convenient parking. This may also help to entice people to dine in our restaurants and to make other purchases. It may also encourage businesses which are not currently open evenings to remain open. Now, having said that, I would like to add that the DWBA was asked for recommendations and preferences before there was a definitive outline and before there was finalized discussions between village members and the WSCC. We based our decisions on the cursed, I'm sorry, on the Cass Burlington lot remaining dedicated to business patrons. We based our decision on the assumption by WSCC that closing Cass would not cost what was first estimated. And we based our decision that there would be further discussion with local residents. Since hindsight is 2020, I believe what we would have, what would have been best and most time-effective would have been for the WSCC to talk with the village manager or board members in person or via email, and completely outline one or two plans that would be most beneficial for all concerned and within a budget. The downtown business owners realize the benefit and potential that the car show has. We can appreciate all the work and effort that goes into the event and other events. But the WSCC and village board need to realize the disruption to businesses while these events are happening. We can work with and even support these events, but that doesn't change the fact that there are negative effects. Whether it is loud music, crowds, lack of customers, lack of parking, or washroom issues, there are negatives to all the positives. We're running out of time for this year, and the WSCC and village will do what they can with cruising nights for the summer. But we need to keep records, our businesses need to keep records of sales and comments regarding this season, and then in the fall, discuss the pros and cons and bring forth a definitive plan for 2011. The DWBA does thank WSCC and the village for including us in their discussions and understanding our concerns.
Thank you.
And as I said before, with everything, we all have our opinions. So I'd like Tim to come up. He's got some very valid things to say.
Hi. Tim Giannakopoulos, Karma Salon Spa, 15 North Cass.
That was well put, Barb.
Thank you. We, we are all for this, to promote the downtown. My concern, and really my only concern, is the parking. It's negatively affected my business. I don't know how other businesses, how, how they felt, but I did actually run some numbers. And I looked at 2008 and 2009. And last year, our numbers were decent. The previous year, where there was no parking allowed for anybody really but the car show, we were down huge. I have the numbers. I don't know if anyone's really interested in seeing them, but with, what was it? It would be three months, right? Three months at four days, so 12 days. In those 12 days, we were down $21,000, I believe, something along that lines. So it, it really does affect us. I'm, I'm all for it. I'm all for promoting the businesses. But again, in the past, it's been taking up the parking lot and taking up the street, and there's been no parking at all for patrons. And I, I think, again, like you said, in this day and age, if you look up and down Cass, there's a lot of businesses that have left. And I, I think we need to come to some kind of agreement to have parking available for the businesses that are here. You know, we're, we're vested in the community. We're here five, sometimes seven days a week. And for, you know, these shows to come by, however many days it is, it really does make a toll. Again, we're the heart and core of downtown Westmont, and I think we need to at least dedicate or some, do something with having availability for parking for our clients and not deter them. And unfortunately, you know, these events try to bring people in, but at the same time, it, it keeps people out. So somehow, what Lee said earlier, there, there's got to be a way. I mean, to just say parking only for businesses, it, it needs to be policed somehow. And I'm just asking for parking. I think all the businesses would back me at some point to leave some kind of parking for pedestrians, or for our patrons. But it really has made a toll on our business. So I know it's meant to be good, but at the same time, it does, does do some negative things. So if there's a way to keep a parking, I'm, I'm all for it. Keep parking open for the businesses. We need to do it somehow. But again, it has to be policed. To just say, oh, we're going to leave it open, somehow we got to either block spots off. And I know that costs money, too. I, I don't know how much it would cost to, for the proposal of blocking off Cass Avenue. I'm sure there's some kind of, I don't know if anyone has numbers on what that would cost or not, but those were thrown around a little bit that, that evening, and they seem pretty high as well. So I don't know if that's a good idea or, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a comment. Last year, I mean, we, we did keep the Burlington and Cass lot open. We changed our configuration to help the downtown businesses with, with, with parking. And we moved things farther north, but unfortunately, having things at Bank of America and, you know, you're, you're kind of very far away. You know, all the, the restaurants and everything is, is on the, you know, on the Burlington and Cass side there. And, you know, getting people to come down there is, you know, that's where everybody wants to be, is basically what the issue is or concern.
I personally, if anybody cares, would, would like to see that lot remain open for customers and people going to the businesses. I prefer the street being closed. It's my own personal opinion. But the lot of businesses, it would be a huge help.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Go ahead. And that, that's really all I have. I mean, as far as, you know, the, the two proposed layouts or any kind of compromise between those, those two layouts this year. Again, I know the downtown businesses would like to participate more in cruising nights this year. They like to set up, like the Taste, having tables and chairs, as well as even having a sidewalk sale, be able to sell merchandise, not food, of course, but, you know, merchandise outside their businesses during the cruising nights event as well.
Bob, what are your, what's your information on, on cost as to whether or not, you know, we could block off Cass during that time?
Yeah.
We've seen a proposal, but it's, you know, it's pretty high. Is that what, is that what it actually is? Could we do it for less than that?
Well, I don't know what the exact cost is. I know Steve has been working on those numbers as well. At one point, I heard it'd be $900 per event. But I know that there's been some discussion about trying to reduce that a little bit.
Yes. Steve had done some adjustments to that, and I passed out to each board member a copy of his adjustments. It's about a little over $1,000 per, per time.
Right. What I'm saying is, is there a way to decrease that?
One of the ideas that was kept around at the Public Works Committee was, was a combination of things. But one of them was the idea of using volunteers. And then there was some discussion about maybe trying it a couple of times, using the more significant car events to try the volunteers and, and actually close Cass and not close it on the other events, I think, is, is how the committee talked about it.
$1,000.
One of the things that I was asked to do after the Public Works Committee meeting was to check with our insurance carrier on the, the use of... was to check with our insurance carrier on the use of volunteers, and I did speak to them. And like most things, you know, there is some risk in terms of, you know, when you change or you close down a street. It wouldn't jeopardize insurance coverage for us. They said you could do it. You could use volunteers. The key would be to make sure you define very well exactly what they're supposed to do each time, and the training is the most important thing. And then, of course, you know, making sure they do what they're trained to do. But it can be done. So that was kind of the discussion. I know Trustee Fleming led that discussion. He may have some comments.
Yeah, my comment to that was, if that was the case, and I do appreciate you checking on the risk part of it, was that if maybe, you know, you had a couple of volunteers and one member from the street or Public Works Department to oversee what they're doing, instead of completely having, you know, three members from Public Works. And I know that Westmont Special Events has got no problem with getting some volunteers. And I mean, I'm willing to volunteer some of my time. If I've got the time to do it, I'll volunteer and help do it. I don't have a problem with that. My whole thing was, with closing Cass Avenue down, was to do something different, centralize it better, as well as give it the type of festive atmosphere that we're looking for. You don't have to worry about someone at mid-block stopping traffic to get families across the street. You've got it open. And I mean, you can move up and down. I know that Karen has done a lot of work on sponsorships for live music at all the events. She's gotten a lot of sponsorship for that. You could have your bands in the middle of the street or whatever. You could have your cars diagonally up and down. And like Bob said, you can get 70 to possibly 80 cars in that first block. There's always cost incurred in anything that you do that may be different. And, but I think we can scale the actual true cost back of what the village would have involved here.
And please keep in mind, too, I mean, WSC doesn't have the money to put into the street closures, and I wish we did. I know Karen's been very diligent in getting sponsors for cruising nights and has done a very good job, outstanding job, actually, in getting a lot of sponsorships from a lot of the downtown businesses as well, some in kind, some cash. And our hope is to actually bring a lot of live music downtown, too, as well this year. We would love to have a band every night. That's kind of our goal, in getting that to happen, too, as well. But like I said, you know, WSC is, you know, this event probably costs us $6,000, $7,000 to put on, and we need, WSC puts in $2,000 to cover the cost of the event, and the rest is picked up through sponsorship for the entertainment costs.
You know, I hate to be the bearer of bad tidings, but the businesses on Cass Avenue are near and dear to us all because they are fighting the good fight. They don't get any benefit from this. This costs them money. Thursday nights, of all nights, besides Friday and Saturday night, Thursday night is the one night that the core businesses are open, the restaurants are crowded, the service businesses are open, and they rely on Thursday nights. So with no benefit to the businesses and no revenue, but a cost to WSC and a cost to everybody, the village, if we were to fund it, which I am totally against, with the situation that we are in, I'm opposed to going ahead with something that is doing nothing but costing us money. If times were different, my opinion would be different. On the things where, you know, you guys work so hard and you benefit and you finance next year's event, like the Taste, but everybody's sitting here going, how much of a hit are we going to take on this? I'm against going forward with it. I'm looking at the plans, and I have walked classic car night, and I think that splitting it up between the parking lot at Burlington and then moving it further down, when you get that split and you've got your Toyota Camrys and you've got your, you know, Ford Escapes, and then you go back to classic cars, it's disjointed and it looks goofy and it looks unplanned.
Correct.
So in order to do it right, it needs a core, you know, things blocked off and a focus. But the focus is expensive. It's expensive for our businesses, expensive for WSC. I mean, if you take a hit on Taste of Westmont, which you don't want to do, and you have to pay for any manpower, and despite the number of volunteers, there still has to be the police presence, there still has to be certain people who are on the payroll. I can appreciate it, and, you know, you guys put in so many hours and don't think it is not appreciated. But in this, I'm just not seeing the benefit. For people to look at cars and for us to try to figure out how to juggle money for that and how to tell our businesses, we appreciate the fact that they are struggling, I can't, I can't, I can't go along with this. So.
The other thing is, too, and I will say on the negative side, this is a negative, that if we were to close the street and it were to start to rain, then car nights gets canceled. So that would be a major negative.
Well, if, you know, if we knew the weather, you know, we wouldn't even attempt to close the street, knowing that if there was any chance of rain, you know, we'd have to, in that situation. But definitely, rain is, last year, we lost, what, four days, five days from rain? You know, and that was probably a big hit as far as getting the cars out there last year. And I'm sure this year's going to be no exception with the rains.
And my two cents, Trustee Emory is an eloquent speaker. She says that really, you do a nice job. And I have to agree with her on that. If we don't, if the businesses are taking a hit and the village is costing money, it's costing you money, that you could put into the Taste, maybe we'll, maybe we don't want to go forward with this in this economic times, and maybe it's time to scale back on this event and put our efforts more towards the Taste, you know, since that's trying to get self-funded, and hopefully in better times, we can bring it back.
Or move it to another location.
Or move it to another location.
Cass and Ogden and the Jewel parking lot, up by all the rest of the car dealerships, where people can go in there, if you can get the Jewel to go along with, like Westchester does on 31st and Wolf, and the Dominics Lot, where they bring in 350 cars almost guaranteed every week. There's no issues of parking, there's no issues of safety, because no one's, you know, out in the street. But to sit there where our largest revenue dollars are coming in from Ogden Avenue, where the car dealers are, but we keep the car show away from it, maybe they get involved with it somehow if we bring it up to them. But it's just another way of looking at it.
Yep.
Well, when you talk about, are you talking about Proposal One or Proposal Two, or both?
I think the proposal is cancel cruising nights.
That's my proposal.
And put the efforts towards other events, instead of actually going to doing this. And, I don't know, I mean, Trustee Emory brings up a very good point, and I mean, I guess, I guess the question comes down to, the unfortunate thing is dollars and cents. And I mean, if it's actually costing more time and money, not only from your standpoint, but from the village's standpoint, I guess, kind of have to think about that a little bit over the weekend, because you say that the Taste is taking a hit and it needs more funding, then maybe it's a case that some of these other events have to go by the wayside for a while and come back and regroup at a later time. You know?
I mean, I don't say this lightly. I mean, Cruising Nights has the cutest pit crew in the business.
Well, and we've moved forward this year. I mean, we've got a lot of sponsorship dollars that have already come into the event, and our hope is that at some point in time, it'll be self-funded, you know, with getting sponsorship.
How long it took for the Taste to become self-funded?
Well, it does take time, you know, and, you know, and it's an effort that, well, my wife has put a lot into cruising nights this year as far as sponsorship, you know, getting that sponsorship in. Did you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to say, there are businesses that definitely benefit from cruising nights. I mean, I know that Travelers and the Ice Cream Place, they're already gearing up for cruising nights, because they do make money on Thursday nights. I think Fleming's, I mean, I ate there probably six times last year in his garden before the cruising nights began. The Nights do very good. They're a non-for-profit organization, and they bring in, you know, a lot of revenue to their organization. So we're looking at some of the businesses that may, you know, not benefit from it or struggle maybe because they can't find parking, but we are doing everything in our power to make sure they have parking so their customers have somewhere to park. So we also need to look at the businesses that are benefiting from the car show. And the families in Westmont are looking forward to that car show and bringing their families down, enjoying a Thursday night, enjoying a little bit of music. And last year, it was bigger. You know, we've had more cars last year than any other cruising night. So you'd be taking away something from the citizens of Westmont that I think they really enjoy it.
With last year's configuration, and I know it was not optimal, I mean, you had restroom issues, all kinds of issues, but mostly that was, you know, the signage, everything went up with volunteers.
Yes.
I'd be curious to know what it costs the village in that scenario in terms of dollars.
Probably not much, because our volunteers, EMAs that did all of that.
They do all that. That's volunteers.
They didn't have to close any streets.
I, you know, I absolutely have a problem, you know, throwing $14,000 that we quite honestly don't have. But I also have a problem with just pulling the rug out from underneath it.
And me, too.
And if we can do it, you know, you've got the $2,000, you've got the sponsorship, it's not costing the village money, it's helping some of the businesses. I don't want to just pull the rug out. I don't think that's a good idea.
Is there a way we, I'm sorry, is there a way we can scale it back? I mean, you've put a lot of time and effort into it, and what is it, 10 weeks?
We have 12, I believe, 12 weeks. We can definitely scale it back.
Is there a way to scale it back? And when that, a compromise to help both parties, the ones that it is being successful and the people that need the parking, where, like Tim was saying?
And it brings people from other communities. I talk to people every week, you know, that come from other communities, and, you know, going back to the days of the Promote Westmont and, you know, when we used motel, motel tax funds for this, you know, the whole idea is to showcase the town, and I think this is a really good venue to do exactly that.
Can I just, just one thing, you know, I think you guys just said it was even bigger last year. I don't see why, you know, to keep moving it from this to that, you know, it's going back. Last year, Bank of America was nice enough to offer their lot, and it seems like, as far as a business standpoint, it worked out for us. I had no complaints. We had plenty of parking and whatnot. Why not keep it where it was? I don't think it costs the town any extra money. Bank of America was nice enough to use the lot. I know my clients were very happy that it wasn't congesting too much, and it, you know, it promotes another part of the town, which may need it more. I think, you know, this B1 district is, you know, doing pretty well as it is, but again, last year, our numbers were decent, and like you said, your numbers were decent. It seemed like it worked. That's all I just wanted to add there. As opposed to getting rid of it totally?
Yep. If I could. I can see all sides on this. I can see the advantage of disbanding it. I can see the advantage of not wanting to pull the rug out from under people. The WSC has come around to businesses, they have asked for sponsorships, and they have said that you will get this, this, and this, and I don't want to see them in trouble for not coming through with it. What I might like to propose, though, is, first of all, that there maybe be a little more discussion, if possible, with some of the businesses in the downtown district. And then as a compromise, to maybe offer up that some of the car shows, as opposed to Thursday night, be integrated into some of the other events that we do have. Put one of the car shows in with the Taste, put one of the car shows in with Celebrate Downtown Westmont, May 14th and 15th. The Pumpkin Harvest Festival in the fall, you know, so there may be a way that we could not disappoint too many people and compromise on that.
And then also with our face, too, if we do move forward with it, basically is closing off, still keeping that, the cars close and central by using Irving, closing off that little section right there, instead of using the Bank of America lot, so it brings them a little closer in.
You know, of your proposals, I like the first one better, because it's all, there's no breaks. It's right there. And the parking lot's open.
That is, that is the ultimate proposal.
I think that's a, that's an easy call for me, is number one over two.
Other than the expense, it's lots of positives.
Yeah, but leaving the parking lot open.
We already have an agreement with Bank of America to use their lot.
Correct. And our ten was to use it for just public parking right now, not so much classic cars. But still, we could always go back to last year's layout or any of these other layouts that we're proposing this year.
Did the car, I don't know what they do, or so the people that own the cars, what do they like? Do they give you an idea that?
They'll have their different cliques, you know, and their different thoughts on it. Some like to kind of be all by themselves in a corner and be isolated from everything and talk cars, and talk cars. Some like people to, you know, they want to showcase their cars. They probably put thousands of hours into it and thousands of dollars, obviously, so they want to, they actually want to park it on Cass and have people look at it and talk about it and discuss those kinds of things. So they're just, they're just a collective group of mixtures of those types of groups, you know. And we did last year have a few car clubs come in and, you know, and they kind of segregate together a little bit and, you know, so it's good variety, you know, different things.
Bob, when's the first one scheduled?
July 3rd.
June 3rd.
Oh, June 3rd, I'm sorry, June 3rd. My mistake.
You know, the concern I have with just not having it is, it's taken about 10 years to get it to this point.
I think it's more than that.
And if you stop it, guess what? You're starting all over again, because people forget. They have, you know, they just forget. They don't automatically just come back. If we can continue it, even as we did it last year, or if we can come up with a way to do Proposal One with volunteers, so that there's no added cost to the village, you know, I would, I'd be willing to consider that.
I guess my question would be if the Bank of America, or if you have that agreement with them, and it worked out last year well for the businesses, why are we even proposing anything different? I mean, you have a couple of major businesses that are losing major money on Thursdays. I can just tell you about my own, is that people will literally call, and I cannot tell them, oh, yeah, you know, come on in and schedule or whatever. I have to tell them, there's, the parking lot is closed. The first thing they'll say is, well, we'll do it some other time. So, you know, are they going to come next week? Are they going to come in a month? I don't know that. The only thing that we have seen is that the numbers really speak for themselves, like Tim mentioned earlier. So I guess my, really, my question is, why the change if Bank of America agreed to have it again, open for you this? And what is the benefit of the change, anyway?
Well, the second proposal is basically keeping it the same. Instead of having the Bank of America lot, we would basically put it on, have it, the cars on Irving in the closed-off section, on the closed-off section of the street right there, keeping things close, because a lot of people felt that Bank of America, well, it was a long walk to go all the way down over there, a little bit to look at the classic cars.
But closing that would then cost the village money, correct?
Well, I believe if we close Irving, and Steve, may you correct me if I'm wrong, basically you just drop off the barricades.
If it's Irving, there's essentially no cost.
We would just put up the barricades ourselves, or the police department would, and, you know, it's a quick, few minutes, put up and then tear down.
You know, I know some of the things that I heard from people that brought their cars there was the lack of restrooms, the lack of a close, you know, place to grab a sandwich.
Correct.
Everything is at the other end.
Exactly.
So, you know, that was their concern that I heard. But, you know, I don't know that it stopped them from still coming. You know, if we could solve those problems some way, you know, get those.
Can we maybe have a stand there or something for a sandwich? I mean, because obviously, if there, you know, if.
Set up a few grills in that lot and, you know, ask Fleming's or somebody to, you know, flip burgers, whatever. I don't know.
A portable patty.
A portable patty, maybe it could be done.
I mean, that one sandwich, you know, and closing off the entire street is going to affect much more than the $5 sandwich, or the fact that they can't walk too much, you know, so.
We're saying that the lot by the restaurant. We're saying that the lot by the restaurant, that's going to be kept open for business parking entirely. There's, as long as you please it so that other people can't get in there and you're stopping them and you're going to do it via, however, to check to make sure, they're going to be able to go to the restaurant, they're going to be able to go for their hair appointments and go to Flemings. It's, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to please everybody and we're trying to work, you're trying to work, do your best. I personally like the idea of blocking it off for that period of time. Try it and see, see what happens.
If we can do it cost effectively.
We can do it, right. If we can do it cost effectively, and that's what we need to work on, but even manager Searle said there's a way to cut back on the, on the cost. And you guys are so fantastic about getting volunteers to do everything, that whatever manpower you need, I'm sure you can muster to keep the costs as low as possible, yet, yet go on with it. And just like trustee Seneca said, you know, there's been a lot of planning, you've done a lot of work. Now to go and drop everything, I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair either. I mean, we've got residents, we've got a lot of people that are counting on it already. They don't have no idea.
Yeah, that'd be a tough pill to swallow, to lose the event entirely.
Exactly.
I mean, I would love to see us close the street, keep the lot open, but I just can't, in my heart of hearts, justify fourteen thousand additional dollars to do that.
I understand that.
Not when fourteen thousand dollars isn't going to be made up.
Right.
Correct.
That's the, that's the only problem that I have is, is telling the residents that we're spending money on something that we can't recover. And so, that's the only problem. I mean, it's.
And that's why we had the second proposal because, you know, given, and really the third proposal, going back to the old layout, but to give, to give the village some options here to, you know, what we can and cannot do here, you know.
Bob, real quick, again to reiterate with America, you guys have done a fantastic job. So, I, I know it seems like a very difficult night up there for you guys, but in no way does that indicate the efforts and we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
I feel bad, you know, saying some things, you know, but you guys have just done a fantastic job and it looks like from what we're saying that we got to keep the lot open.
Yeah.
That's one. And if we can get, cut the costs down, close off.
Whatever.
You know, if we can keep the costs down with volunteers and close it off, we may try that. Otherwise, go back to the way it was or.
Or some form of, of that, yes.
Using Irving and not use the bank parking lot, that, because it sounds like that's as close to a win-win as we might be able to get to. You know, if it doesn't cost the village, if we keep the parking lot open and the businesses benefit. And that's, I think, wasn't that the reason we, well, that wasn't the main reason we started all this, was to get foot traffic into downtown?
Right.
Mm-hmm, correct.
That's exactly where it started.
You know, and, and in good intentions was to get the foot traffic, but then unfortunately we hurt people in the process. And so, now we're trying to get to a win-win as best as we can, so.
And, you know, and just one more time, I mean, without the WSCC, I mean, these are all volunteers, hundreds of volunteers that, that get thank yous and that's all they get. You know, you look at a community right next to us, Downers Grove, they had a cast of thousands on the payroll to put on a festival that was like second rate. Yeah, I'll say it. I truly believe that. I boycotted it when they had the body piercings in the street. I'm sorry. You know, you guys do a great job and without you, we wouldn't have any festivals, so I appreciate it.
And for us, this is a labor of love. I mean, we're doing it because we get no benefits out of it, you know, personally. We're doing this because, you know, we love this. It gives us an opportunity to work with the communities, the businesses, you know, and make something happen that's really nice, that brings a lot of quality and to the, to the town as well.
Larry, did you want to add something?
I did because hearing all the conversation, it sounds as though people might be pleased basically going back to the layout of last year. And if you add that half a street closing of Irving, that probably, it won't affect too much of any village budget, so there'd be no village funds involved at all. That might be a compromise solution that, you know, tries to appease several interests. So, I just wanted to kind of point that out that, because I think you were mentioning cost to the village. That layout last year cost the village not a single thing. And Bob's absolutely right. For some of the businesses downtown, cruising nights, I think, is one of their best nights because we're bringing people in and they're going to the restaurants. Maybe not down as far on the south side, but definitely some of the businesses, they do benefit. So, it's like the mayor said, we're trying to appease a lot of interest.
Right.
And if it wasn't appeasing people, then I would agree that maybe it is time for the event to go.
I mean, you're, you're walking a tightrope and it's like in, in order to reach a win-win, it's, you know, going to be tricky, but if it's doable, hey, that's.
Well, I think we've made a lot of compromises too across the board for everyone, so. If we want this event to continue on.
Well, what about, what about this then? If it's not feasible to do it, from a village standpoint of money, you use Cass Avenue, north and south, both sides, you use the Toon lot and you close Irving down.
That's what that proposal is.
That's what their proposal is.
That's it.
Yeah, but someone said if it was still feasible to close the first selection to do number, the number one thing, to do that, that's a preference. That would be closing Cass Avenue.
Right.
That's what the volunteers, I think.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, Steve, Steve would have to give some numbers based on one man and then whatever. But, I mean, then your other situation is you leave your lot open at Cass in Burlington, you use Cass, you use Toons, and you close Irving.
Lee, can I just make a comment? I like your suggestion. We definitely, wouldn't cost us any money to close Irving and do it exactly that way. Why couldn't we do that? And then you guys agree to close Cass on, let's say, two or three main events. So, on squad car night, fire truck night, maybe the last night, let us close Cass.
Or to go back and look and see, maybe with volunteers, you wouldn't have to have village costs involved.
Exactly.
That you could close Cass every time.
You could close, close Cass.
That'd be wonderful.
And as long as you've got the manpower there to direct the traffic.
I think you have to talk to the public works.
No, no, the, the lot would stay open.
Burlington lot, no matter what, is staying open.
It's open.
No, just for business parking. I think we're, we're.
And in both scenarios, Burlington would be open.
Yeah.
Costs you have already reflect the minimum village participation. There are certain things you, you know, when you're talking about traffic control and the chief had to take a call, but when, from the liability and the public safety point of view, you can't have volunteers putting up traffic control and expect it to be, I don't want to say enforceable or, I just, I'm worried about the liability that would come with that. So, we're already specifying the minimum amount of manpower to set that up. And, and also, you know, from the conversations, it's, there is a, there is two costs calculated. There's a total benefit when you take into account all the time that Public Works puts into that with the detour and the road closure. It's not just the road closure, actually, most of the cost is the detour. And the scenario is, we've been working on this since the Public Works committee meeting, this is the best fit to get the most done during the normal business day. Now, those costs are still reflected in there, but that's not additional costs, that's, if you will, loss of productivity. This is just work that the same Public Works staff can't be doing other work because they're doing this. But the overtime costs are the ones that are separated out and those are the ones that are unbudgeted or unanticipated and the, the direct costs that are, you know, above and beyond last year's scenario. So, that's why there's two different totals in there.
Okay.
So, there's two different ways to look at it.
Okay, in an, in an effort to move things along, I wonder if we can't just table this and then come back later.
Sure.
The next meeting with a small, a, a different way to do it, a way that's going to cost less. If there's no way of avoiding the village having to pay that money, then go back to the original.
Sure.
Back to the original plan. But, I mean, rather than going back and forth. But I think the one thing we have decided is the lot will be open for the business people.
And when you said lot being open, that's a hundred percent of the lots. Because we were asking to use one-third of it, but we're talking a hundred percent of the lots.
Whatever can be done, if there is some way, costs could be cut down enough to close Cass fine otherwise, just do it the same way they did last year, with Irving being cut, shut off too.
I think I'd like to see us just move forward with closing Irving.
Yeah.
Plan. And then, you know, that gives us a good three weeks plus lead time up to when it starts to start thinking about what happens on squad car night. By then, by then, we'll have a far better situation of what our budget looks like. We haven't even begun that yet. So, I would, my recommendation would be to go ahead with the Irving street closing suggestion, keep the lot open, do everything like as last year.
Toons and.
Doesn't cost the village anything.
And then revisit the closing of Cass and.
And then revisit.
Sure.
For at least one or two of them, if we can afford it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we exhausted? What else? Nice job.
Yeah. We'll have to go back and, and look at the wording for Monday night. Next item, Manning School. Board to consider motion authorizing the closing of the 200 block of North Linden Avenue to permit use of the street by Manning School for their annual field day. Activities on May seventeenth, eight-thirty to two-thirty, rain date scheduled for May nineteenth. Any questions?
No cost to the village? Go for it.
Yeah. Next item, 520 North Cass Avenue, First Midwest Bank. Board to consider request for a zoning code variance to increase the number of signs from one to two.
Good evening. Bob Stamen with First Midwest Bank, senior property manager. This is.
Frank Lambert, South Water Signs, sign fabricator, installer. I've been out of runway. Sorry. Last month, we were granted a variance to add flat cutout letters on the front of the building along with the ground sign that they already have up.
Basically, when I came in to pull permits to switch sign for sign from First Two Page Bank, there is already a sign up there that said First Two Page Bank. But unbeknownst to us, when we came in to pull the permits for it, it was put up illegally. That's why I'm here tonight.
Make that.
This is, it's a good idea. It's not the first business we've had this and I think it's great.
Yep. See ya.
So, we're just making it.
Didn't cost us a penny, we're happy.
Thank you.
We're just going ahead and making it, approving it so that we're up to, up to snuff with, with code.
And we appreciate it.
I don't think anyone's got any, anyone has any objections.
I do have a question for the attorney. When we do approve it for them, that doesn't mean if perchance they go to sell the building, they still have to, the new people still have to come in for permission, right? This doesn't give them automatic. If they should decide to move out and sell the building to another business, that business can't just put things up just because we finally gave permission. Because these people came in legally to get permission on something.
Right. I mean, we could do it either way. If you were wanting to grant permission for that specific location to have additional signage, we could write it that way. Otherwise, it could simply be for this specific property owner, tenant.
Well, I don't think we allow anybody to come up and just put signs up in the building. I mean, I don't.
There's no grandfathering of signs in this.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody else moves into the building, they're going to have to, they're going to have to go along with what our codes are. I mean, we're not.
Just want to make sure it's stated out loud that whoever, you know, if this, you know, if they decide to move and sell it to another one, they, they have to come in and do the same thing you folks have come in and done and make sure they get permission again.
But we don't want you to sell the building or anything.
No.
After hearing about all you guys, all the activities you guys have, I know we're going to stay here for a little while.
See, that's good. Can we use your lot?
Well, I can't say yes, but, yeah, but ATM machine.
But an ATM machine down there.
We could run a shuttle from the lot.
Come on in.
Got a portable ATM you want to put out or what?
Pulling up an account with us.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Questions of the village attorney, she can't talk. Yeah, she has laryngitis, the poor thing.
Next item, Illinois Fire Safety Alliance. Fill the boot for burn camp. Board to consider approval of the fire department participating in the IFA, I FSA Fill the Boot for Burn Camp program at major intersections along Cass and Ogden on May fourth, fifth, and sixth, 2010.
Same thing they did last year and the year before. We're good. My only recommendation would be for the boots that go on the biggest feet to be the ones that are filled.
There you go.
And be careful of the traffic, you know, because nobody stops.
Moving right along.
Oh, we're getting punchy, let's.
Intergovernmental agreement. Board to consider an intergovernmental agreement between multiple fire agencies concerning a fire service communication network.
Come on, let's go.
Good evening.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments.
Just limit your comments.
Why are you laughing so hard?
That's my support. My support unit background. Good evening. This is a contract which we had with Downers Grove, Clarden Hills, Olbrook, Westmont, and now just recently in this last year with also Tri-State Fire Protection District that allows us all to use the same radio frequency and in support of one another with our automatic aid, mutual aid agreements. What we've done is that, there's a couple other agencies, the Village of Hinsdale and also the Willow Springs Fire Department also request that they come aboard on this fire frequency. We had a meeting with the chiefs and it was agreed upon that it would be in our best interest and also to help our neighbors to also participate in this program. And so, this is basically a contract that's been redone, it's been submitted to the village manager and also to the village attorney.
Okay. Are you usually pretty successful in?
Yes, it's, it's a good tool which we use to, you know, work our communications between one another. Each agency participates with a small amount of finances in order to maintain the system. Westmont does not have any real equipment into the system. We're in a lucky position of being in the middle of it all. And we have our different towers and different radio equipment that surrounds the Village of Westmont. So, we participate in the program, but we don't have any physical equipment so far.
But my question really was, it's successful in terms of getting people to put their five, ten, twenty dollar bills into the boots.
Oh, on the, we're, all right, we're talking two different things. We're talking about the, the boot, which is the.
Right. Go ahead, go ahead.
You got up too early.
All right. Anyway, first, the topic at hand is the agreement with the different fire agencies for the radio frequency, which all the chiefs are in agreement with. And that, that program's been working well for one another and we're, we support it and we ask that you seek a favorable decision on that this coming Monday. The second thing we talked about was the fill the boot. Over the last few years, we've done this for MDA, which the fire department has supported. This, we're a little bit of confusion. Now, we, the firefighters said that they would like to support the children's burn camp through the Illinois Fire Safety Alliance. And over the years, I was a counselor there. And so, we talked to the firefighters this year. They said that they would rather support the burn camp rather than support MDA at this time. And so, that's where, that's where the change is.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
For clarifying that.
I do.
Next item is a proclamation to consider a motion in April eleventh through April seventeenth as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Westmont. In the effort of moving along, I will read that proclamation on Monday evening. Next item, declaration of village property as surplus. Board to consider declaring vehicles received through police seizures as surplus village property. These items will be placed on, on auction either through eBay or another auction service as authorized by the village manager, be sold to the highest bidder. Any comments?
How many vehicles?
That's an act, pardon?
How many vehicles?
Two.
What are they?
First one is a 97 Chevy pickup, the second one is a 2001 Dodge Sebring. I'm pronouncing that right, Sebring.
Neither one appropriate for our investigations division, but I thought I'd ask.
Why not?
Were you nervous?
Okay, next item, quote of ethics update. Board to consider approving an update in Section 2-538. Definitions, ethics officer of the Village, Village of Westmont's Code of Ethics.
This is actually just removing, it just allows him to do more, the reference to the Assistant Village Manager in one section to state that it would be the village manager or his or her designated, to, to kind of clean that up future. It's just that one section, it's in section, under definitions, under ethics officer. Section 2-538 of Village Code.
Any questions? Miscellaneous, finance ordinance number 23.
Wait for reading.
Request the way of the reading. Purchase orders. Questions on purchase orders.
The purchase orders, I thank you for splitting them up.
You're welcome. We're getting trained.
Well, without the.
Any other questions on purchase orders?
Well, without the, knowing what the budget is, once again, you know, I'm not gonna be going for the vehicles. I went back and pulled out again what the Public Works Department got and they have now fifteen, with the last one, four of them last month. They now have fifteen new vehicles in the street department, oldest being 2006. Water Department, six new vehicles, oldest being 2007. And street division, well, I mean, then it, they had replaced the four in the street division. Now the two they're replacing, some of them they're replacing, only had fifty-some thousand miles. I know they say hard miles, but let's get with it. They're trucks, they're supposed to take hard miles. If they're buying wimpy vehicles, we wasted our money. So, telling me, writing in here saying that they're, you know, that they're heavy-duty equipment or they're, they're hard, you know, working miles, doesn't cut it. So, I would like the board to consider postponing the purchase order till after we know what the budget is. I mean, we're sitting here for an hour talking about a thousand dollars a week, fourteen thousand total for the car show, and we're ready to spend a, what, about eighty thousand dollars for two more vehicles, six vehicles within a month's time. That's all I have.
Is there a, a problem if we did postpone this till we got more budget information? I, I know this was in last year's budget, right?
It's in the current budget.
The current budget, yeah, the current budget. But, just to see where we're at for discussion?
Just to go through the first budget workshops?
Yeah, just to get, because, I mean, with this, talking about the six hundred thousand and.
Yeah, again, it's not gonna affect our cash flow because we've got the financing. But I suppose there's no harm in, in waiting, I mean, we're only a couple of weeks.
I mean, even if it's budgeted, I think, if I understand you, is it something that can flip over into the new budget year if the money's not expended out of the general fund?
Be correct, yes. And we will, as we've talked about previously, we will be talking during the budget workshops about what we believe, the level of savings we've gained from updating our vehicles. We're taking a look at the maintenance costs now and hopefully we'll be able to give you some very specific numbers during the workshop.
That'd be helpful, I, I think, because that was, that was the purpose of doing the replacement because we're paying so much in maintenance that it was costing us more, and so.
The other thing, the other thing, just sort of related to this topic I was gonna point out is I passed out a, a form that we just put together, and I know this is a little premature because we haven't yet gotten the final report from the ADHOC Climate Control Committee, but one of the things they talk about is purchasing vehicles that improve upon the previous vehicle's environmental friendliness. So, this form will be completed each time we, we make a purchase for all vehicles, not just trucks. And, and the, we will note, you know, what, how it benefits or fits with the, what we anticipate is going to be the recommendation in the ADHOC Climate Control Committee's final recommendation, which should be coming to you, I'm thinking, in the net, within the next three to four months, I think.
Anything further? Any other questions?
So, are we postponing this?
I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
Well.
I think it should be, I agree.
We can make that decision on Monday.
So, you want me to leave it on the agenda?
Because we can just take it off, if we're gonna just hold it.
We'll leave it on and then we'll.
Okay. Whatever, I'm just checking.
Maybe we check and see if Ron has any other additional information that we wanna provide for everyone to consider before taking this off.
Or voting to postpone it on Monday.
Whatever they wanna do with it, okay? Thank you. Unless there's anything else to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session as requested by the manager regarding personnel.
Second.
And Emery.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Flavino.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Boersley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned to executive session.